Mayor, your line.
Who is W S Bass?
Pat Stone.
Okay, everybody pulling your mics, please. Okay, at seven o'clock, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. R C, call a role, please.
Moore.
Here.
Mar.
Yeah.
Moody.
Here.
Engstrom.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Right, thank you. Item three is the pledge allegiance. Everybody please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item four then is perfection and approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for that? Larry, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, no carry. All right, item five is a public comment time. Over, Kai Bar, come on over here, please, to the to the mic. Yeah, we kind of got amazed here, so, yes. And if you would please tell us your name and...
Hi, I'm Barbara Hrusman, and I'm here to give an update on the Postville Food Pantry. Carolyn Livingston, Audrey Vito, Sharon Dran, Pastor Lynn Knoll, and I are on the board. And I just looked it up and was surprised to find out that we have been incorporated for twenty years. I have worked there for twelve, so... We currently have ninety to a hundred and twenty families come each week. That's up from what used to be seventy-five. It's just been increasing. They can come every week, on Tuesday afternoon, from two to five. Our clients speak English, Spanish, Creole, our new one, Ukrainian, and Somali, which is our big challenge. In the month of August, we gave away ten thousand nine hundred pounds of food. I did a little addition on produce that's been coming in because we are very grateful for everybody in the community that's been sharing their garden bounty with us. And so, I added up. We have received one thousand seven hundred and twelve pounds of produce from community members. The major ones would be Doug Egland and Judy Egland, but we have many people that come in and it's all appreciated. And we love the variety, and our clients love seeing fresh fruits and vegetables. The community garden itself has donated two hundred and eighty-one pounds of produce since May. And then there's a group called Humboldt Hands Produce. And I'm sorry, I don't know all the details there. They do a... You can buy a box from them each month or something, I think. And anyway, they share their extra that they have with us.
They're a farm in Decorah.
Okay.
And they filled out a federal grant to be able to donate food to the food pantry in town here.
Okay. We also had the Deering Beef Farm has been donating beef, and that's through a government program. So we've appreciated that. And I'd like to thank the community for its support.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Yeah, very good.
Hello, my name is Crystal Doffe. I am the Postal Public Library Director. I just wanted to give you an update about how the Guatemalan consulate actually went. Last month, we talked about how the library helped almost four hundred people sign up for appointments with the mobile consulate. And to be clear again, the Guatemalan mobile consulate, the only thing they were here to do was to give Guatemalan citizens up-to-date passports and up-to-date IDs for Guatemalan. They have nothing to do with U.S. citizenship. They have nothing to do with, you know, permanent residence status, nothing like that. They're only about having Guatemalan citizens have up-to-date IDs. If you're a Guatemalan citizen and you're here waiting on your asylum trial, you still need to have an ID that's valid. So that was, that was the point of having the mobile consulate come. So we managed to have five hundred appointments get booked. The library helped to book almost four hundred of those appointments. About four to four hundred and fifty of those folks were from Postville specifically. The consulate managed to shove in twenty to forty more appointments, so they actually stopped closer to five hundred and fifty people. We did have fifty to a hundred folks from our surrounding communities, from Wisconsin, from Minnesota, from other Iowa towns. And I wanted to share some of the things that were outcomes of that day. At the library, we decided to help make those appointments because to us, it seemed like the right thing to do for our residents. But I wanted to share with you guys that sometimes the right thing to do for your town can also be economically smart and have other impacts. Since we helped those folks make those appointments at the library, we have had... I think our copy sales, the sale, the money we made off copies for the past month is quadruple what it usually is because those folks made copies of their birth certificates, et cetera, and then knew, oh, I can make copies here. Oh, there's some people here who can speaks in Spanish. It's a comfortable place. I can come back, give them my money, and get things I need. We also probably gave out twenty to thirty library cards in the past month, just to Guatemalans. And we've had a ton of folks from that community coming to our stay-in playtime, which is that toy time. Before, it was predominantly utilized by, I would say, our Jewish community and our sort of Postvillian generational community. So now we've got our new Guatemalans using that, too. For the community, the benefit this had, too, we had about ten consulate employees here. On day one, they ordered probably five hundred dollars worth of food from Jalapenos and had it delivered to the Lutheran Church. On day two, they probably ordered a comparable amount of food from El Pajentec. They also bought a bunch of desserts from Mido Cielana. They also probably bought gas while they were in town. Maybe they went to the Mexican market while they were here or one of the Guatemalan markets. So the consulate employees alone probably put several thousand dollars into our local economy. We also had fifty to a hundred folks from other communities come into Postville to utilize those appointments. They probably had to eat lunch or dinner, buy gas. Maybe they come from a community where they are the minority, and they were like, well, there's a Mexican market. There's a Guatemala. There's two Guatemalan markets. They might have also shopped while they were here. So just thinking about how I think it's worth doing the right thing for the right reasons, and that's part of, you know, our heart and soul plan was being welcoming and helping with our diverse population, but having an economic impact is something to keep in mind as well. And the other thing, too, to have a town of three thousand people-ish bring a mobile consulate in, I mean, like, so that's a really cool thing to do that you don't see in a town our size very often. And we had a lot of outside folks coming in for that day. We had a lot of volunteers from Decorah as well, seeing that we did that. So huge shout out to the Lutheran Church for hosting that. They were great. And then again, that Northeast Iowa Peace and Justice Center in Decorah are the ones who arranged all that. Kathy Mitchell specifically. I've called her the mattress queen. She's the one who helps people get beds and things in town. And we just sort of facilitated those appointments. But overall, it was a really cool experience, so I just wanted to share that. That's all I have.
Thank you. I kind of have to make an announcement. For some reason, our owl up here is not tracking where it's supposed to. So you folks out there that are screaming, I don't know what you're looking at, but hopefully you can hear us.
Yeah.
Okay, Bob.
My name is Bob Schrader, and I'm here to talk about the four-way stop and about the good job that law enforcement is doing here. And I know that there's some things coming up that the law enforcement is going to have to deal with. And I think it would be good to spend some of our traffic camera money on four cameras down at the four-way stop. Over the years, there's been a lot of accidents down there. And I think, and this would, these cameras would only be for investigative purposes, not for writing people tickets for running the stop sign or anything like that. But just so law enforcement could see what's happening down there. If there's an accident, they won't have to spend time doing as much investigating as if they had the cameras to watch. And it's cheaper to have cameras, I think, than to hire numerous employees to try and navigate all the things happening down here. So that's just a friendly suggestion for folks. Spend a little money of that that you have from the traffic cameras and put some cameras down there. And another thing, you don't have to ask the DOT, you know, to put the cameras down there. If they're mounted on city property, I wouldn't think you'd have to ask them anything. You could just go ahead and do it. So that's all I have to say, and I hope you find my suggestions encouraging because I'm sure that the chief and his people would appreciate the help in monitoring that stop, not the stop sign, but what happens down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Because I can't see you. Okay, if not, we will go on to item six then, and that's the water bill dispute of 112 North Lawler. That's Mr. Bass.
Yes, Mr. Bass, you're a boss. Hi.
Hi.
I'd like to second Bob because there is a lot of accidents on that corner, almost accidents. I see every day because my business is just in the corner. So something has to be done because it's very dangerous. My daughter-in-law got run over two years ago with the baby. So something has to be done. But anyway, about two weeks ago, I had a leak on my basement across the street on the 112 North Lawler. And I got the bill, the water bill, and as you know, the sewer is connected directly to the water bill. The sewer goes according to how much water is used. The only thing I want to highlight is that in that basement where the leak occurred, there is no sewer. There is no... It's an unfinished basement, and all the water goes into the ground. So my bill was, usually is about ninety-five dollars. I mean, like, the minimum for commercial, I think, is like, what, ninety-five or something like that? Yeah? And now it's like three hundred and, the sewer themselves, like three hundred and fifty-something dollars. So I just, I'd like to ask if I can get an adjustment in that one.
I have a question. Is this across the side street that your property you're talking about?
Next to Fidelito Bank, where the second-hand...
Oh, trends. Okay, that, you bought that?
What used to be the Postville Health.
Oh, oh, okay.
Between the bank and the Somali Center, there's a thrift shop. There's a second-hand...
Bob's and more.
Yeah.
Bob's and more.
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, because there was that trends that was open for a while, and that was kind of the second-hand store, too, next to Jalapenos.
No, that's, that's my brother.
Another block, another block.
That's my brother, not me.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know.
So there's no sewer. And Zach was there a few times, and Larry knows that there's no sewer. And the relief from that is a lot of money.
So what you're looking for, sir, is a little bit of a
refund, a sewer.
Refund, yes.
The water I spent is on my, you know, I have to pay for it, but I don't argue with that. But there's no sewer. If we had a sewer, I even, I'm not going to complain at all. But because there's no sewer at all, I mean, somebody can go in and say there's no drain.
Sure, yeah.
Were you able to get any documentation together, like from the plumber or pictures or?
Of what? Larry was there and Zach was there.
Who was there?
Across the street on 112 North.
Zach was there, and who else?
Larry.
Larry Spungham Hating?
Yeah.
Okay.
He told me to tell you if you have a question, just keep me calling.
So there isn't a sewer in the building of that?
In the basement. There's no drain in the basement. The leak occurred just out, just past the meter, the water meter, in the basement. In the basement, there's no sewer. There is sewer in the building, but there's no drain in the basement at all.
So what was, what caused the water leak?
Well, I'm not sure. It's actually a fairly new line that was installed there maybe two years ago. But it happened exactly either the same day or the day after they opened the water again, in, after they finished the paring the street. So they opened the water, and maybe it's connected to that. I'm not sure. I don't know. I'm not a plumber. I can only change oil, you know? I'm not a plumber, so...
So this is up on your water. Who is smaller than me here?
Is the tenant.
Now, should you have some forms of the sign as far as the documentation?
Yeah, I mean, you have the policy in front of you.
You have a policy in front of you.
Yeah, signed documentation outlining the nature of the incident, estimates of time, flows, steps that have been taken to assure this doesn't happen again, and specifically where the water went. The council reasonably should expect documentation to include photos or other evidence, statement from your plumber, insurance, documentation, et cetera. So I think that's what Devora was asking, what documentation there was.
Is there any?
I only had information from Zach's telling me it was a dirt floor. That's all I had. But we didn't have anything from Larry. You didn't bring any statement from Larry.
I mean, I can ask him to write a paper. I didn't know that I have to bring pictures or documentation. Nobody told me that. When I came here and I asked,
Yeah.
they told me just talk to the city council. Nobody guided me and told me that this is the water I have to bring. Zach knows.
Well, Zach told me it was a dirt floor. Yeah, I asked him about that.
Really, he's not arguing about the water mount. He's just arguing about the sewer mount. And Zach said it's their floor. To some extent, that's your documentation. Though the place the water could go, I'd go down.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So the amount of relief would be ninety-five dollars?
No, my regular monthly bill is about ninety-five dollars, including sewer. It's like the minimum, the commercial charge. Because they don't use, it's two people upstairs and the lady in the shop, you know? So there's not too much usage of water. So I pay, they never, almost never exceed the minimum. So it's, I think, ninety-five dollars.
How do we estimate the sewer?
Normally, what we do is we'll take a three-month average of the sewer, but in this case, this tenant was new, so we only had one month of usage since he's moved in and there was a leak. So, you know, an average sewer, based on the one month, was twenty-five ninety-six. So, I mean, it was kind of hard to tell if that's an average of his use because he's only been in there one month.
That tenant, that is two people, were there. The apartment was empty maybe for a month because I put new flooring, and I paint and everything. I did some repair in the house. So if you can take the average when they had a family in the, I mean, that was like three months ago, maybe.
Okay, we didn't look back three months. We just went with this billing.
Yeah, if you look three months or four months ago, you want to see that there is no two hundred dollar bill. I'm not sure. I don't think so. And there's only two people living there, so two adults, no kids, no nothing.
The tenant, you're saying you put in a new floor, but that's not where the leak is. The leak is in the basement.
So it had no bearing on...
Yeah, so from there.
Yeah, it's just past the meter, just half, just past the meter. That's why.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five ninety-six was the previous bill.
Right, for the sewer.
Right.
So I guess I'm going to move that we reduces sewer bill by twenty-five ninety-six.
That's right.
Twenty-five...
Three hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. You have the paperwork in front of you. Yeah.
Well then...
See my notes with the bill?
You gotta...
Do you have any idea what the sewer bill was with, when the family was there?
I don't remember. I mean, I think that they haven't, I don't remember. I don't remember.
I guess, I just feel it'd be nice to know what, what some history was.
Right.
You can't get a history of a one month or a partial month of one tenant that you don't...
So the month before was empty.
Right, and that's...
So now it's ninety-five. I usually get ninety-five or a little bit more every month.
There's a minimum.
There's a minimum, yeah, the ninety-five. Like, I get across the street, you know? I get across the street, ninety-five.
But you remember, your minimum sewer is twenty-five dollars.
Yeah.
Is a minimum sewer. So twenty-five ninety-six would be about a minimum.
So how much water, how much was the water?
One fifty-four fifty-six.
So it's double the amount sewer, almost, right?
Right, yeah, because sewer rates are more.
Yeah, no, that's, that's okay.
Yeah.
So I just, I did a relief. I mean, I can, whatever is needed. Maybe a deduction of two hundred bucks is going to be fair, I think. I mean, I think I'm paying too much, but two hundred dollars, I mean, I will be happy. So just make it a hundred and twenty-four dollars. Give me a break on two hundred dollars.
I think if you will, this would not have, you know, enough. I think two hundred dollars would be fair. I have a discussion sometimes, so anybody can object or do whatever they want, so.
Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'd like a motion.
Okay, Larry's made a motion for a two hundred dollar refund. Is there a second? Is there any further discussion?
It's a credit, it's a credit.
It's a credit, yeah.
Yeah.
Who's second?
Yes. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right.
You can put cameras on my, on my shop if you want to, for that corner, right? Yeah, I'm not going to charge you anything. Just put the cameras and...
A lot of people run the light, okay.
I actually went today to Feathersburg, and they have a stop line, but they have the lights, you know, around the stop. It's not what happened. People don't see the, and they fly with eighteen-wheelers.
Oh, yeah.
Full of, fully loaded.
Yes.
It's a miracle that nothing happens over there.
No doubt about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, okay, now we'll move on to item seven, Housing Trust Fund.
How are you guys tonight?
All right, how you doing?
Not too bad. I'm going to kick this one out to get up here and hand these up to you guys. All right, I'm sorry. Anyways, busy day, it sounds like, huh?
Oh, yeah, every day.
All right. Well, I'm handing out a few documents here, and it'll highlight kind of the three-year usage and twenty-twenty-four usage for Postville specific. And kind of the, well, not kind of, it is, my intent to come here tonight to, here's our C. I'm going to give you this also, because this will go to you anyways. My intent is to come and hopefully have you look at, possibly give it a higher amount and for a longer period for commitment. And the numbers speak for themselves with regards to what I'm going to talk about. So in front of you out there.
Are you Chris?
I am Chris, sorry. I'm going to get back to my spot, and then I will go over what I got. Yeah, so I'm Chris Rondell, I'm a housing planner for Northeast Iowa, and I'm here to talk about the trust fund. And with that being said, the paper that I gave you, that's got the highlight on it, shows that for the past three years, the usage has been a hundred and seventy-six thousand eight forty-six for the city of Postville, and that's within city limits. And every year, it's been about a thousand dollars, roughly thereof. Some years, I think there's a little bit more. But if you look at return on investment, you hands down are the one community that has not matched with return in, in what you have given. So we're looking at, you know, return on investment at almost six thousand percent. That's a pretty good return on investment, especially if you play the stock market, which is twelve percent, it's really well, so. Something to think about with that. And I'm not, not here to say good, bad, or anything in between. It is what it is. The numbers are. But on the second document here, it kind of gives an overview of twenty-four, a little bit on twenty-three, so it talks about, you know, how many different programs we did for the trust fund, both in twenty-three and twenty-four. Then a little bit more on some other programs that we did. So if you understand how the trust fund works, the trust fund's like the cornerstone of all the housing that Upper Explorer Land does and much of the housing that is done within Northeast Iowa. So we give out loans, low interest loans, or some of them are forgivable also, to residents who need assistance with, it could be a variety of different things. Those loans, then, the forgivable, we don't get payback on, but the others we do, which then goes into a revolving loan fund to continue on with other programs. I think here in Postville, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe with the revolving loan funds, we've done some demolition projects, I think, in the past. Definitely have done housing. Maybe, maybe we haven't done the demolition. But housing studies have been utilized within the county, which Postville uses for some other things here and there. We do other funds to which go into other programs. So it's kind of like the cornerstone of what we do all in all for matching programs. This last year alone, we've, we're able to secure almost one million seven hundred thousand for the five county, of which in Elmaki here, if you open up to your second page on the flyer, or the stable one, if you take a look on the second page, let's see. We are on twenty-four review. Elmaki County received four hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and thirty-three, which about half of that was Postville loan. So that, outside of the three-year for Housing Trust Fund, the other parts is Postville Elmaki County. As I told you last year, along with the supervisors and the other communities within Elmaki County, because I live in Elmaki County and I really would like to see Elmaki County grow, having been gone from the area for so long. There's an opportunity here. So this last year, I made it happen. We did a repair program along with the Housing Trust Fund, which was hugely beneficial. The state of Iowa was awarded from the federal government eleven million dollars, and I was able to get about one point one million of that, just for our area. I would say a very large portion of that was used in Elmaki County, as you can see, for the repair program. The other part was in Fayette County, and the city manager and mayors were pretty proactive down there, you know, working on getting homeowners into these programs. So, but we also have the same thing here in Elmaki County, plus working with a lot of the contractors. I've got over ninety-six contractors, many of which are from Elmaki County that are out doing jobs, both, you know, in Postville, in Elmaki County, but also further out. I work with absolutely every one of the banks in the county at some point or another, whether it's through a repair program because they have a loan with that bank. Or we also have a homebuyer program, which you see in there. We have a second program this year, is another homebuyer. And so I'm working with them also. So with, the Housing Trust Fund is much more than just giving out a loan to fix and grow. It's employing a tremendous amount of people. It's helping banks. It's helping insurance agencies, not that they both need much help, making money. But it does still, you know, provide opportunity for them to, you know, get people into homes at, you know, rates that are, you know, reasonable. And I would say, for the most part, Postville walk-on area has gotten numerous teachers, new young teachers out of college that could not find places to either rent or afford to rent. So they were able to get into homebuyer programs that got them in homes, you know, within the area so they can teach at our schools. It's been really a good year for what it is. So what I'm, what I'm really looking for is for the city of Postville to up its, you know, amount in giving from a thousand dollars, which if I remember, that's what it is for this year, but I'd like to see if you would be willing to amend that up to a one level amount. up to a one level amount, and, uh, continue that for the next three years. There's not a community out there right now, I will tell you, that does not have an argument against that, but every one of the communities that I have gone to specifically that have higher usages, Postville being the number one, um, that, in terms of the percent of, of use versus, um, investment, um, have all increased to that amount or very close to it. I know it's a lot to talk about.
What is the amount?
Twelve thousand five hundred, that's, that's one, that's one project. And I can, will guarantee, I will continue to do the exact same thing, I'm finishing up one here uh, this week, uh, Wednesday, um, and I, it seems like daily, I get new and new um, requests for homes, last week it was a homebuyer, um, that came from, uh, the Wayne State Bank, and that was for here in Postville, so you're getting a lot of use out of this for a lot of good reasons, and these homes are getting fixed up, and like I said, it's not only just getting people into homes, it's saving the housing stock that you have and creating a lot of jobs that come along with it, so.
What's the, what's DPA?
Down payment assistance, yeah, yeah, so, and, and I, I would say probably right now about fifty percent of money spent out for housing trust fund is in down payment assistance, and of that amount, a fair amount has come or originated within Postville, um, and then, you know, either stayed within Postville or gone to a um, community that's close by for people to, you know.
Structure, if you put a bathroom in somebody's house, that would be structure.
Yep, 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 there's a lot of it this year was, uh, roofing and HVAC units, is what it was, and then down payment assistance. You're getting, you're getting tremendous, uh, um, use out of the program for, for a lot of good reasons.
You put, um, handicap ramps up?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep, actually, we did one in Postville this year.
I think I know that, that's what I was wondering if that was real.
Yep, yep. Um, like I said, uh, had this conver, same very conversation with Walk On, had the same one with uh, we having the same one with Decor, had one with every one of our counties, um, and all of them are falling in in the same, you know, line, doing more, um, for that period of time. And like I said, uh, I really don't want to have to structure how I'm able to spend it out by board initiative, so what they're considering, you know, depending on how we move forward with our giving, banks of which being one, is it's going to be allocated to the amount to which is given for any given community, so I just, you know, I, I don't want that to happen, so I'm working really hard coming out here. These are the numbers, the numbers don't lie, um, that's just what it is in the three years, and that's what it's been just in twenty-twenty-four, so it's, uh, you're getting good return on investment, is what I'm saying.
Do you have a list of properties that are just in Postville?
I can.
Yes, please.
I, I can, yeah, yeah.
So you have this money, and then you, uh, give it out for these various, do they pay it back?
Some of them do, it's all income-based, is what it is. Some of the programs that we also have, like the, this year we got the IFR repair program, and we also got a homebuyer program, so, um, those were forgivable, um, amounts, but they also came in and did, you know, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollars worth of repairs on homes that needed the repairs, and there wasn't a single home that I would have considered should not have received something, you know, anyways. Um, I don't get a lot of that, except for outside of O1, um, you know, or N01, I should say. Um, there's some pretty rough ones down there, but, but in our neck of the woods, yeah, we've saved quite a few homes, like put a new roof on and stuff like that.
Well, what if you put a roof on or a, some kind of a structure, um, what if they decide to move out?
Well, then there is a payback, yeah, oh, yeah, there's clauses to that, it's a five-year, yeah, yeah, it's a five-year, yeah.
And all of those are money?
Yeah, I'm all for the housing trust fund, yeah.
So you have the money, then you give it to these people and they're.
The only way we get the money is with the matching, so if you look on your second page here, yeah, you can see this one pie chart that I have, the state's green.
So that's what the state.
That's what the state will give us, yeah, or up to, uh, this last year, seventy-seven percent, this coming year will be seventy-five percent, and then the rest has to come from communities and counties, yeah. Yeah, so all I'm asking is, we get a little closer to, you know, kind of with, with, yeah, with our budgets and, uh, you know, just reality of what is being spent in our communities, and like I said, I don't want to you know, be forced to have to change how I, you know, take applications in and say, yep, sorry, Postville doesn't have money, or sorry, Lansing doesn't have money, or however that works. And there are some communities that just don't get, I mean, that's just the nature of what it is, and, and, uh, but, you know, right now, that's been what it has been for, for the number of years, but we are to a point now, I've probably got seventy-five applications in that are sitting in wait for next year, so it's absolutely unbelievable, we're already out of money, so. And the need will always be there, but, and it's not really about, um, giving the money out for whatever reason, it's about keeping our housing stock, you know, available, and paying it forward for the next, you know, people that are coming in, most of our applicants that we get are fixed income, you know, living on social security disability of some kind, or they're younger, getting down payment assistance, and trying just to get into homes, and usually those ones, they're taking and turning around and fixing that home up as soon as they get into it, you know, to make it.
Did you look at how much we make from our property taxes and stuff to, to know that we, how much we can't help you out?
Oh, I, I get that, but there's not a community also that, that's in northeast Iowa that's in any different situation. They, really, it's that way all the way across, I mean, it's rough, I, I do get that, it's just a thousand dollars for, you know, almost two hundred thousand dollar return on investment is, you know.
But we're going from three thousand to a request of thirty-seven?
I just did that, yeah, I just did that with Howard County, um, yeah, as a, as a county.
And how do other counties figure to budget that?
They just, they figure it out, I don't know how they figure it, I can't tell you on that end of it, but, you know, and this first year, if you're not, you know, um, able to amend or, you know, have the ability to, I, I, I get that, um, but just consider down the road, you know, for the next few years, uh, take that into account, I will be an advocate for Postville, you guys have a lot of need, I get it absolutely every day, um, and I will continue to do the best I can, uh, for the community here. Any questions? It's a lot, and like I said, I'm not here to say good, bad, or anything in between, it just is what it is and where we're at, and I'm not trying to compare or make it a competition, but just, uh, sharing what I, what I know, and hopefully what, you know, we can do to continue to improve our communities and, you know, Postville, you know.
So is this thirty thousand dollars more for Elmaki County or for all the counties? Postville.
Postville.
Oh, so that's, is just for?
Not thirty thousand, it's just twelve thousand five hundred.
The state is giving the. The state's giving.
Yeah, that would be for the full amount, how the money gets, um, spread out really is by first come, first served, who comes in, so really, being advocates for yourself is tremendous, um, I get, right now, at least, with, uh, without really a lot of board, you know, directed, um, make the calls on who gets what and where, um, which is beneficial for Elmaki, considering how I live here. Um, but, you know, it's so much more than just the housing trust fund, you know, that's just one piece of much more.
So who does make the decision who gets the help? You have a board that you do?
Hmm, yep.
Just one person?
Until they tell me otherwise, yeah, yeah, which they have been, we've been talking about, you know, down payment assistance and not having that, because the banks are probably the worst offenders of all, you know, without giving money and getting the most.
Maybe we need a GoFundMe.
Any, any other questions or anything on that end of it?
Can we invite you to come back during budget season when we can do something more concrete and add a more talent?
Yeah, yep.
I think that would be very good to hear.
What do we have in the budget?
We don't have, you all know our tax dollars are down. You're looking forward for our next budget meeting.
To, to, uh, be honest, yeah, I mean.
Because we, because we can't do anything now.
Right.
And we're not doing our budget.
All I'm asking for right now is consider what you maybe think you can do in the future and make that commitment. We already know that you budgeted a thousand for this year, which is five hundred less, I think, from last year.
Yeah, tax dollars are down.
Yeah, yeah, so, yep, so that's kind of where we're at, but, and yeah, I come in anytime you like, and, and whatever, you know, you need, so.
If you get us that list, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I won't put names on it, but I.
That's fine.
But, uh, yeah.
Don't need names, alright, okay, thanks, Chris.
Alright, there's some extra copies there if anybody wants, yeah, if you do have any other questions, just reach out and.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's go on to item, uh, eight then, that's the tree removal bids, I see Lance is here, do you want to address any?
Just kind of here to see how they fell and so on, I guess.
Okay, but, I mean, you're here, and if you want to explain, uh, you know, you, you've got a bid in here at certain amount, uh, just come on up the podium and tell, tell everybody who you are, because we are broadcasting live here, so.
Yeah, I'm Lance. I guess I just kind of came up to see where everybody else's bids were, and I, the only thing I kind of was, was on the bid, it, it said that they might individualize trees instead of taking the whole list, like a complete bid. I, I think it, every place else, I guess, it's a complete whoever gets the lowest bid, but.
Well, you do a good job, I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I do a lot of cities. And the, and the other thing, I guess, would be the budget, um, you know, I don't know where we're at on that, but.
Have we individualized trees?
We have in the past, yeah.
And that's how the bid came in, is individualize trees, right?
Right, yeah, but I think what he's saying is he would like it to be a lump sum, is that what I'm getting from you?
So, you know, if, if you've got a great big tree that you're, you're way less on than the competition, if you've still got the lowest overall bid, you, you can.
You're talking about cherry picking off this list.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, you can make it up on a smaller tree.
Right, right.
It, it should all average out, as where if you pick and choose, this person gets this tree, this person gets that tree.
Intend to be a cherry pick list.
That's up to the council, it was, it was put in the language that way.
It was in there, yeah, of course, I didn't read that.
This is just the wrong date on this one, right? Oh, yeah, twenty-four, so this is, on the top, it's the twenty-two, but, oh, yeah, that's just a wrong. Yeah, he signed it as twenty-two in the box.
I guess that's all I have.
Okay, well, thank you, um, so you've got, you've got the bid list in front of you, you know, um, you see the figures? It's up to you folks how you want to handle it.
I don't like the cherry picking, I think, um, I think give the bid to one person. Alright, so just for the public purpose, um, Lance Hager Gardner lump sum of fifteen thousand for twenty trees to be removed, and the other bidder was Brink's Tree Service for a lump sum of sixteen thousand six hundred.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Lance is really hard work, watched him over the years, and he's a good man.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Well, what he's done is clean, it's cleaned up, super.
I have to agree on that, I've seen Lance's work, and it's, when he's done, it's, it's super cleaned up, so I'd move that we use Lance Hager for our tree bids for the twenty-two.
Alright, there's the motion for Lance Hager, Larry, any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Yeah.
Okay, then item nine is, uh, police purchase request, that's, uh, solar speed signs and spikes.
So here a couple of years ago.
Can you pull your mic in, please?
Can't reach it, but that's. So a couple of years ago, we were, we were discussing, we were talking about, um, the, basically the solar camera, speed cameras that we have on the west end of town and south end of town, and then all the mayor wanted was hint around to put one out on library, and, uh.
You say the other mayor?
Yeah, the other mayor, on the east side of town, and then potentially put one up here on the north end of town when all the construction and Ziegler gets put in, they will have the new speed zone and everything. Uh, the one company that we normally have dealt with before, there's a special going on, we can get basically was it two for the price of one, is what, what the special is, it'd be the exact same signs that are on the south end and west end, when you come into town, it lights up at twenty-five mile an hour mark.
But these are not speed.
These are speed.
You find, it's just a reminder.
They're reminders, yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
People listen to them, I mean, have you found it helpful?
Yeah, I mean, on the one up here on the west end, since construction, that, when that sign came down, it, traffic started picking up more and more coming in, well, then I put that speed trailer back out there, and it sits out there for, you know, until wrong battery the last two weeks. And I've noticed it's starting to slow back, starting to remind them, especially with school going on now, too, it's helped them quite a bit, so. So that's my locations that I want to install these solar speed signs.
And this can come out of the camera money?
Yep.
That's, I mean, honestly, what it's intended for, right?
Yep.
Well, I just got asked by a couple of residents on the east side, too, about there needs to be either a car sitting or a camera put up or a speed sign put up, because.
We're planning on putting.
Library brand is getting.
Right on the, right past the tracks, probably coming in, right into your daughter's corner there, that's where it's needed the most. And then out here in north end, but that all depends on what the project with Ziegler and the speed, the, the change of the speed from there, so.
So what's, which one's the pricing? So the Elon City is the deal, that's, they agreed to extend it, um, to the fifteenth of this month, and that would be with shipping six thousand eight fifty for two.
Two, and originally, what is it?
Um, and then the other quote I had, uh, based on the fifteen inch for, is four thousand four ninety-eight eighty-five each, so you're looking at well over eight thousand. From, um, Traffic Safety Solutions was that quote. And they're both solar? Same, yeah, same size, fifteen inch, yeah. And is that for two, the forty-four? Yeah, the six thousand, yeah, that would be for one, four thousand ninety, yeah.
And the six thousand was for?
Two.
Two.
Um, the Elon City are the exact same solar signs that we have west and south, that's the exact same brand, exact same size.
And they're the cheaper ones?
Yes. And they're solar?
In the budget, I moved that we purchased one too, Matt, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you.
Purchased two of those Elon City.
Elons.
Traffic reminders.
Solar signs.
Solar signs.
Solar traffic reminders.
There, there is made a motion.
Ones you already have now, yeah.
Yes, yeah, or.
You're happy with them, but you said the battery doesn't?
No, that's on the, that's on the, what I have out there now on the west end, the speed trailer, because the, the sign itself has actually been down all summer because of the construction, and they haven't put it back up, it's, to replace it, I've been using the the mobile speed trailer out there.
You gotta chain down.
Yeah, yep.
We've got a motion, it is a second. Alright, Devora, any further discussion? Not all of the favor say aye?
Aye.
All say no, period, alright.
And the other thing is for, um, basically spikes. basically spikes for each vehicle, each squad. Stop spikes. We have a set right now that I believe that they're either in the Charger. Well, there's one in the Charger and one in the Durango, but they're very, very old. These are more oh, how do I want to say it? Easy to operate and without and safety for the officers as well. Once in a great while, we will get called from other counties to help with, you know, if they're having someone coming into town with high speed that they, or I'll say they'll call us out of town and see if we have stop sticks, basically what they are. And that's what they'd be used for.
Yeah, spikes in the car that's coming in flat tires, right?
Right.
How can the old ones get old?
Well, the ones that we have are the, I we haven't used them, but they have, these are kind of like brittle.
You got one set of sticks.
One set.
You got one set of sticks.
Yep.
And then you can't reel those back. The other one.
This is the style you can, you know, cover the whole road completely. And and it gives you a hundred feet for officer safety. So they can, as soon as that deploys, it goes across the roadway ten feet. But we still are far enough away that we're not going to get in the accident. The ones we have now, you deploy them and you're standing right there.
Oh, Lord, that's not very.
Right, it's only one, it's one stick instead of three sticks.
We might as well just give you a two by four full nail.
That's right.
Pretty much.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah. It's got this, it's got the self re-reel where say you don't need to deploy them. You can hit a button and just retract itself back in.
Pull them back in, let the bed drop by.
We could try the old ones on you if you want.
You're probably with their chasing anyway.
But basis to replace the old existing ones we have for safety purposes. Yeah.
These are reusable, right?
Yep, yep, these are reusable. You replace the spikes if they're reusable. These come with a training set where we practice, you know, how to deploy them.
That's when you go out, Larry.
Yeah, that's where you can, and you can actually dive over them, Larry. But, yeah. So basically, I'm wanting to get three of them for each squad in one training set.
What's the difference between the two training sets? You highlighted the middle one.
They're the same, on a training set, they're the same size. They're both.
So they'd be the the ones that are, yeah.
Yeah.
If you pick that three ninety five, you have to pick the two ninety. Because that's a training.
That's a training one, yeah, yeah. And I believe I do have in my budget.
I moved that we allow the purchase of those speed spikes.
One second.
Phantom spikes.
As long as you don't use them on my car, I'll second.
Yeah, you have to be.
You can use them on golf carts, too.
All right, so we got a motion. Is there any further discussion? Not all of the favors say aye? I say no? Carrie, all right. We are to item number ten, the consent agenda. Anything on there you guys want to talk about? Okay.
Can we ask a question about that?
No.
What's up?
Where is this new liquor license application going to be?
Well, we're going to assume somebody that from the council asked that. Okay?
Does it have a location?
Oh, yes, that's at the new.
Kosher Market, the Old Napa, two fifty one, it's a two fifty one South.
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was what I was.
Fifteen, is that what it is, two fifteen? Yeah, and that's what it is.
So we got that one. Anything else?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All right, second, very second.
Well, second.
Any further discussion?
Just that the pool did lose a lot of money.
Yeah, and I did have some more bills today, so.
I don't think I got any grant though.
The pool, the park.
Well, I don't know.
What's the grant?
I don't know what Karen was telling me that this afternoon.
I have no idea what she's talking about.
I had sent Paula a newspaper article that was in a week or two ago about a grant to app to apply for.
I have no idea.
I don't know, I'll have to just, you know, find it.
I thought we did, we did get notice that we are getting a well marked grant for the parks for fifteen thousand three hundred.
Maybe that was a par, maybe it was.
So, yeah, they'll be needing to.
Equipment?
Yeah.
Oh.
To get a plan together, so they'll be meeting this week.
Good, okay. That is what you told.
Okay.
Okay, I think, just a comment, the function of the pool with employees and stuff, I thought went, must have went pretty well this summer, right?
I think so. I was kind of surprised that the concessions weren't better. I felt like they, we bought a lot of concessions and they kind of hyped up the concessions, but the numbers of the profit of it wasn't there. So, I mean, they only made like five hundred dollars.
Then they had to drain the pool, of course, that's.
Yeah.
Was that part of the killer, draining the pool?
Well, a pool never makes, I mean, it's not a profit. It's just how bad the loss is going to be, right?
About the same?
Yeah, it's very relative to previous years.
Maybe more so with chemicals from that.
Exactly, I mean, expenses, expenses keep going up, you know, and 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 along though with 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 the draining of the pool, you know, we got that new heater, but that heater wouldn't run as hard as, you know, than when you dump cold water in there, you got to heat it up in a hurry. You know, that 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 pool was only down a couple of days, so.
Well, last year was so hot that that pool, even with the heater down, it didn't have to really overwork itself.
Right, right.
But we had to drain it last year.
This year was a cold. Well, and utilities have gone up significantly. I think we had over six hundred dollar reconnection fee just with Black Hills alone. So I think this year we'll leave the heat or the gas on for the season because it just came out safe, a forty dollar savings if we just pay a monthly fee then to shut it off, so.
I think there's ways of cutting and I I I'm very optimistic about next year. I mean, if we can keep the staff we got, I think that lots of good ideas, you know, and so I think it'll be fine. And again, you know, we've got to hopefully hire more people, which means it's going to cost more, you know, to stay open longer, too, you know, I mean, there is Sundays they weren't open. You know, and so I think I think Casey's got a plan, you know, and she's got putting putting things in place.
Having been the person that did the pool inspection for the age of that pool, that's a very well kept place. Zach's doing a great job of keeping it as good as he can for what he's got to work with. So if he can keep, like you said, we can keep people there. And Casey's doing well and if you keep keep the broken glass from getting, making its way in and the policy now with having to purchase the goggles there and being able to check, check the goggles that are coming in. But you take that deficit out of there, that that bad number might not have been so bad.
Right, yeah.
But it's, as I said, of the four pools that I inspect, that one isn't the oldest, but is by far not the newest. And it's it's in pretty good condition, all things considered. So Zach's doing a great job of it.
Good to hear.
Why aren't they training a bunch of them now? Well, several now.
They did before they drained, yeah.
So then they'll be ready to go.
With lifter?
Yeah.
My grandson Jackson came over.
Yeah.
I didn't, I don't even have my agenda in permanent, so.
Well, in all things, too, you know, I'd rather have glass in our pool a hundred times than with the kids and what's union not to do.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes.
Oh.
That was terrible.
Yeah, so on the consent agenda, I do have on there the potential of hiring a reserve officer part time. Also, I might as well put in there as well that this weekend we'll be testing for two full time officers.
Is Will coming back?
No.
I didn't think so, but then.
Yep, so Friday, testing on Friday and Saturday for physical and written, so. Crossing my fingers, hopefully we both pass and go from there. But for in the meantime, we have a reserve officer out of Clayton County. She's a dispatcher, jailer, and she is working part time for Clayton County for their reserve program as well right now in Monona, so. She stopped in last week, get paperwork. I have it on my computer. I didn't print it out or anything yet. Got busy doing stuff today. But we're going to get that, hopefully get that going, too, for her as help out. Being as we're down to two this month, JT and I, it's, it's yeah, we're doing the best we can.
Yeah, you sure are. Right, I think we got a motion in a second, right?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, any other discussion? Not all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Who say no? All right, that's carried. Let's go on to item eleven, then resolution for money to pay the claims.
Someone.
Second? Okay, get that? All right, whenever you're ready, Larsy.
More?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Ingstrom?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Then item twelve is a public comment again. Have we got anybody else?
I just think that the Presbyterian Church deserves accolades for having this last weekend. They do a yearly sort of garage sale, free giveaway for the community. And they try really hard to advertise it to everyone in the community and there were lots of things there. And I just think it's a really great thing. It would be cool if we did it more than once a year in the community.
They're going to be open tomorrow, too.
Are they? Oh, great, so if you don't know about it, it's awesome and that's a really great thing. Presbyterian Church does, so. Sure enough.
Thank you. Anybody else out there? Nothing, 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 okay. Then item, the next one is the mayor's report. Do I have anything? Okay, I got enough about council. You guys got anything to say?
Nope. I wanted to just ask, I guess, just an idea. I I see that like as the months go by, there's like certain things that happen in the city that I always feel like I'm one step behind. People will come and ask me a question and I have no idea what they're talking about unless I look on Facebook. Like, that's where I get the information about the city. So I wanted to maybe suggest if during the month, like on our tablets, like the thing that's in that folder that we pass around, maybe to send more often.
Okay.
Things as they're happening. So when people ask us a question, did I hear what happened with this or, you know, what's not pulling a permit here or whatever it is. Instead of waiting till Casey goes and tells me that there was not a permit pulled or whatever, or, you know, whatever, whatever happens, instead of looking on social media, like just to keep us on the pulse of what's happening in the city.
Yeah, because I'm not even on Facebook, so I don't know.
Well, and if, but these machines now, they should really be.
But I don't look at most of my.
You'll be like, why did I ask?
Sure.
I agree.
If you do send something, I'd have to probably tell them on email to look at this one.
Do you want me to email your personal and say, check your tablet?
Yeah.
I can do that.
I mean, I only opened it up just the other day so I could make sure.
No, I I think that's a good idea.
That'll that'll get down your best. Very great comment.
I seen on Facebook, too, that somebody was having pests, namely probably skunks or other rodents.
Yeah.
And they were wondering about how to get a hold of a live trap and.
Yeah, we took care of that today, yeah.
I reached out to and I just said, hey, I had a city trap, so if they needed it to contact city guys and they can come get ours. And it's good for catching a lot of things, namely skunks and
carol cats.
And cats and raccoon and occasionally a squirrel.
It's nice to contact the person who's in the city, the things that I have in the city.
Yeah.
And so just once a month, we could catch up in that folder, you know.
But I have to shout out to Davey Moore for taking that big honkin' skunk.
We can do that. All right, anybody else? It's your time.
Does everybody get the papers?
No.
The postal paper, yeah?
No good invitation in there, it seems.
You can read it in the library.
Becky's birthday. It's my birthday on Thursday. My sister is throwing an open house at our condo.
Oh.
So, and she wants people to come and I'm worried nobody will and so.
What time is it, Becky?
From one to four.
Until February the twelfth?
Saturday the fourteenth.
You like wine, right? Do you have some wine in there?
Red and white, mostly dry, but some sweet.
Can't hardly pass that.
I mean, I, that's a, come on, if I have it so cheapers. I hate to be the one to pass my people to my party, but.
I hate to say that, but I didn't read that in the paper. Okay, anybody else you guys? Or anything else you guys? All right, that is their motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Otherwise, we're going to sit here a while.
I'm just getting to the end of my, I finally got all my stuff to come up, so I'm getting to the end, page seventy three here.
Oh, yeah, that's a lot of pages.
No doubt.
Okay, all of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Say no, all right, we're done. Thanks, everybody for coming. Didn't see you, but great to have you.
This is so weird.
No, it is.